Good evening, welcome to the city council meeting for Tuesday, May the 2nd. A little bit about our agenda tonight. In a minute, I'm going to invite William, Councilman Ferguson, William Ferguson, to come down. He's going to lead us in the invocation, and he's going to invite some special guests down, and they'll lead us in the pledge to the nation's flag and the pledge to the Texas flag. William?
Let's pray. Father, we come to you tonight to say thank you. Thank you for this amazing city. Thank you for the amazing people that make up this city. Thank you for our differences, and Father, thank you for the leadership that you've put in this city. Father, we want you to know that our eyes and ears are wide open. We want to lead with your wisdom. We want everyone to feel at home here. That is what Sugar Land is all about. Please watch over us as we make our plans. I pray that it is in your wisdom that we act. In your son's name we pray, amen. Okay, if I may, transition here. We probably know there are some champions in this room, so I'm going to start and call out two of them. You can have a seat, all of you but my two champions that are coming up in a moment. You guys, oh, we're doing the pledge, I'm sorry, I'm ahead of myself. I'm so sorry, they're better than I am. There you go. I forgot why our champions are coming up, my fault. All right, in appreciation of public service, well, he never wants me up here for this very reason, right here. Anyhow, in appreciation of Public Service Recognition Week, tonight we have our 2022 champion employees, Carla Allen, where are you? Come on up here, Carla Allen, Parks and Recreation Special Events Coordinator, and Steve Wilhelm, there he is, firefighter to join us in leading our pledges. All right, so I guess you both will start the pledge and then, there you go, it's all you.
Okay.
It is, or just be loud.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
If you need more, if you need more comedy, just give me a call.
And now we've got a, we've got a special recognition. I'm going to invite Chandra Holmes and Courtney Pearl, please come down, and they're going to tell us a little bit about the recognition. Chandra?
Thank you, Mayor. The first week in May is typically when we honor our employees for Public Service Recognition Week. It's just a time set aside to say thank you for everything that our employees, myself included, do to serve the community. And so, again, Public Service Recognition Week is typically done the first week in May, but we are recognized in May 7th to the 13th. And again, it's just to, just to show appreciation for everything they do, their call to service. I kind of echoed. And so, again, we're just here just to recognize all of our employees and to say thank you for everything that you do for us and for the community on a daily basis.
You're not going to venture out there. You know, I think you guys have heard me say before, we operate different than other cities. We hire the best of the best people. We give them a responsibility and the accountability. So this is a way to honor them because they're, all the services that we provide is not provided by council, it's provided by these employees and their dedication, especially during times of hardship, a hurricane, a winter storm, Yuri. So it's important, I think, that we recognize them and appreciate them during this special week. We've got a proclamation. Public Services Recognition Week, May 7th through the 13th, since 1985, Public Service Recognition Week is celebrated in the month of May to honor the people who serve our nation as federal, state, county, and local government employees. And throughout the nation and the world, public servants use this educate, this occasion to educate others about the work they do and why they have chosen public service careers, as well as the many ways government services make life better for all of us and safer. Whereas the City of Sugar Land employees are on the front lines ensuring the safety and security of our community and providing important services to our citizens such as traffic management, safe streets and sidewalks, superior quality water, the best water in North America. Enforcement of our codes and ordinances keep our community one of America's best. We are America's best. Our public servants deserve thanks for working diligently on our behalf, doing important work that positively affects us every day. The city currently employs about 850 employees, still growing. Public safety employees make up about a half, and the employees in the fire, EMS, police, and dispatch departments. The other half of the workforce includes employees in departments such as city administration, communications, engineering, planning, public affairs, public works, information technology, finance, human resources, permits and inspections, environmental and neighborhood services, city attorney, the city secretary, the Department of Innovation, Department of Economic Development, and the Sugar Land Regional Airport. So this is given a proclamation by my hand, and if we could get all the employees that we have out in the audience, if y'all could come forward and we'll get a, we'll get one big photograph. Counsel, y'all come down. Y'all come down. You can step there. There we go. William, now that you've done it, you won't do it again now for about six weeks, so. Third one, there we go. Wait till everybody cycles out. At this time, we're going to move to item number two, which is public comment, and this is for any item except one where we have a public hearing. Anybody that would like to speak on one of the agenda items. Again, we do have a public hearing item tonight, so this is for any of the items that is not a public hearing. Move on to consent. These are all going to be taken as one. I'm going to actually pull an item. We'll go ahead and take the consideration of all the items except item D, and then I'll give a brief explanation of item D. So at this time, do I have, do I have a motion? Got a motion by McCutcheon, do I have, got a second by Carmelli, welcome back.
Thank you. Good to be back.
Good to, good to have you back. We're a full complement. If you'll vote this time, please. And it passes seven to zero. Thank you, council members. Item number three D, consideration of and action on City of Sugar Land Resolution Number 2309, a resolution of City Council, City of Sugar Land, Texas authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Houston Galveston Area Council, HGAC. Call for projects for the congestion mitigation air quality commuter and transit services pilot program and designated city manager or his designee is authorized grant official to apply for, accept, reject, alter, or terminate the grant and to execute all grant documents. There was a little bit of confusion. We received a response for somebody thinking that this item had to do with Metro. Let me be absolutely clear, the voters of Sugar Land have made it very clear that Metro is not something they're willing to participate in. I serve on the board of HGAC. Federal dollars are made available through HGAC in different buckets. This is actually part of our mobility master, master plan. We've had citizen involvement. This is to see if there's some work that we can do with Fort Bend Transit, of which we participate with Fort Bend Transit to the tune of about $80,000 a year, has absolutely nothing to do with Metro. So at this time, I'm going to offer up, I'll make the motion to approve, do I have a second? That was Suzanne?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Suzanne, Ms. Watley, so we've got motion and section, if you'll vote at this time, please. And it passes seven to zero. Thank you, council members. At this time, we're going to move to item number four, four A, public hearing. Receiving here all persons desiring to be heard on the proposed rezoning of six and a half acres from Business Office District to Pearl Lake Point Plan Development, Final Development Plan, which is located along Creek Bend Drive just south of Floor Corporation, further described as the entirety of the Lake Point Track C, unrestricted reserve D, replat, plat number 20070301, and the entirety of unrestricted reserve E in the Lake Point Track C replat, plat number 20070210. I'm going to go ahead and read the consideration. First consideration, consideration of an action on City of Sugar Land Ordinance Number 2030, 2305. An ordinance to the City Council of City of Sugar Land, Texas, providing for a change of zoning from Business Office to the Plan Development District Final Development Plan, the Pearl at Lake Point, for approximately six and a half acres of land located along Creek Bend Drive, south of Floor Daniel Drive. We have with us Ms. Lauren Farrar, Assistant Director of Planning and Development Services. Lauren?
Yes, sir, thank you. So I'm going to start off and then have a few slides and then hand it off to our applicant team, who would also like to say a few brief words to the council as well. So, starting off, just to orient us and the public on where we are, we are in Lake Point, and, I'm trying to get the mouse to work, and we are just south of the existing Floor Corporate Campus, shown here in red, so along Creek Bend and Creek Bend, that's the private Creek Bend Drive there as well. So the Pearl at Lake Point is a 370-unit multifamily proposal of one and two bedrooms. It also includes five live-work units as part of the development, structured parking garage integrated into the building, as well as a number of additional components for residents and the public. About 9,600 square feet of flex co-working office space, a little over 4,000 square feet of meeting space, and then about 12,000 square feet of more public space, so that's your leasing office, your fitness center, and then a cafe and, and coffee shop, as well as dog park for the residents. And this is the overall site layout plan, so in the orange, well, I won't be able to point, but in the orange, you can see on the north side, that is the side that's facing the existing Floor Campus. Those are going to be residential units. You can see that it's wrapped around the sixth level parking garage. The green area is the flex co-working commercial space. The blues are the variety of the amenity spaces, and then you can see the live-work units that face the existing Creek Bend Drive across from the event center. So again, it's designed as five stories for the residential and then a wrapped parking garage, pretty, pretty standard on the building finishes, you brick-stone, stucco glass, live-work units. Again, those are along the ground floor, street-facing side, and the use list on those focuses on professional office, so that will be the, the non-residential component of those units. Also includes a number of pedestrian elements, so the ground floor units are designed to open up into the pedestrian area with some walkout front patios, the wider sidewalks, public plazas that are around the development, and then the sidewalk connecting to the existing sidewalk that will go over the pedestrian bridge across Brooks Lake to the commercial and retail area across the lake. Just a couple slides here to remind us on our land use plan guidance of where we are. The plan does outline specific goals and policies to achieve our citywide vision that's in the land use plan. This proposal aligns with, with two key elements of that goal, two is creating a mixed-use activity center. So this one focuses on having the regional activity centers that are a mix of uses, are walkable, have public spaces, and then the policy that focuses on creating these distinct regional activity centers, and that they should contain a variety of uses and, and serve as those destinations for the city. And then three, encouraging the residential options. So this talks about offering a mixture of residential options in a variety of, of different settings, and then the specific policy that talks about the no stand, no new standalone multifamily, and that they will be located in, in either vertically or horizontally mixed-use settings. And then it talks, this one is the policy that focuses on the ratio envisioning an 88, 12% ratio, and with this development with the Pearl, that will take us to about 91 single-family and nine multifamily, just to be within that ratio. And the Lake Point Regional Activity Center, shown here in the dashed line, you can see Floor, you can see the Pearl property just south of Floor, and this is a pretty diverse activity center, currently has offices, retail, restaurants, hotels, hospital, a variety of residential products already. So the addition of the multifamily is the component that's, that's not currently present in, in this regional activity center. And, and again, the plan focuses on creating that greater mix of uses and, and creating that walkable area. The, the land use plan also focused a lot in this regional activity center at the time of approval on redevelopment of the Floor Campus. It was, it was a big focus, and so it talked about that adjacent development would integrate and should integrate into any future opportunities for the Floor Campus. So we, we were, worked with the applicant to have them open up those ground floor units that are facing Floor, onto the sidewalk and onto that adjacent street, and then providing for on-street parking that, that could provide for additional future potential shared parking opportunities with any redevelopment of the, of the Floor Campus. Completed our technical studies as part of the review of the FDP, so traffic impact analysis study was conducted, concluded that no improvements were needed in the city's public right-of-way, did recommend a few onsite private improvements relating to the parking garage and a crosswalk across the private street. School impact analysis also done by Pasa, who is, who's the ISD's demographer, and said that at full occupancy, it would yield about 23 students from this development. So Planning and Zoning Commission held their public hearing on March 23rd. There were several members of the public that attended the meeting and spoke in support of the project. We had also received comments prior to the meeting, public comment forms that were also in support of the project as well. Overall positive sentiment from the commission, just regarding the overall project proposal and that it's in this Lake Point Regional Activity Center. Couple questions on the private deed restrictions and what they said as it related to the use, and question on the, on the ratio multifamily to single-family that I mentioned earlier. Commission came back on April 11th and provided their recommendation of, of approval to the city council. So we met all of our requirements for the public hearing. As I mentioned, we did receive public comment form for P and Z public hearing, had not received any for city council specifically, but did a lot of our public messaging, had a project webpage on our website, messaging on our socials, and the notification to the HOA and POA. The applicant team also hosted three public community meetings for the residents from the surrounding neighborhoods, so those were all held in Lake Point and held by the applicant. And again, in April, the commission unanimously made a recommendation of approval, and so our recommendation this evening, after the applicant makes a, a brief presentation, would be to hold the public hearing, followed by first reading of the ordinance, and then a second reading at a subsequent meeting. I'd like to invite up the applicant, if you, if you will.
Thank you, Lauren.
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, excuse my voice. I'm Les Newton with PCD, and after many years of hard work, I'm very excited to be here seeking your support for what we believe is an exceptional multifamily project for Lake Point Town Center. Lake Point is already a great community, but it will be made even better by the addition of Pearl. Nick Leitner with Morgan will come up later and tell you more details about the project, but I wanted to take this opportunity to, okay, how do I advance? The mouse is just a disguise. Okay. You're all aware of the vision in the land use plan, which encourages walkable mixed-use communities where these mix of uses work together to make an area more viable, bring success to the area, and benefit the overall city. This photo shows you just how much mixed-use is in Lake Point already. It is the largest geographic regional activity center in the city with the greatest mix of uses. 332 high-density, single-family homes, 1.5 million square feet of office, a half a million square feet of medical office, 250,000 square feet of retail, two hotels, a hospital, 115,000 square feet of fitness and recreation facilities, and of course, 65 acres of lake, trails, and park. Lake Point also has the highest taxable value of any of our regional activity centers, and adding a high-end multifamily component will complete the mix and help improve the sustainability of our retail and our commercial services in this, in, in Lake Point. Lake Point already fulfills the vision for successful mixed-use rack without actually having any vertical mixed-use pilings. But please note, we are in full compliance with the development code by the addition of the 25,000 square feet of non-residential uses that are on the ground floor and create a very nice streetscape. My last point is that the land use plan also calls for these racks to be pedestrian and bicycle-friendly to promote, specifically to promote community, a sense of community. Lake Point, again, already meets that vision. This map, which was in your package, shows that the residents of Pearl will be able to walk to Whole Foods or the restaurants in less than 10 minutes. And the trail around Brooks Lake, I would argue, is one of the best pedestrian facilities in our city. It's one of the most used, and every day it, it creates a sense of community, it has those interactions. Pearl will just greatly enhance that sense of community, and again, will help improve Lake Point's long-term sustainability. I'd like to bring up Nick Leitner with the Morgan Group for him to tell you a little bit more about his company and about the project. Thank you.
Thanks, Les. Welcome, Nick.
Thank you, Les. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Last time I had an issue. Want to make sure everybody can hear me. Good evening, City Council, Mayor. Extremely excited to be here and appreciate your time. As Les noted, my name is Nick Leitner, I'm the Houston Development Partner for the Morgan Group. Before I begin, I thought it would be appropriate for me to express my gratitude for the opportunity to be here and speak with you all and present the community. I want to appreciate all the efforts of staff to date. We've been working on this for a long time. I think the process has been very cooperative, and I do appreciate the efforts and the vision that everyone has shared over the course of our, our time together. So let me advance this slide a little bit. I'll go past these two. What I expect for Pearl Lake Point is honestly to have the most unique, dynamic, live-work environment that Sugar Land has seen to date. I know we have a lot of beautiful spaces, there's a lot of great communities, a lot of great projects, but nothing quite as dynamic or as interesting as this. I think what's going to happen in the future is going to support sort of a new gravity, if you will, in Sugar Land. We will have a unique, highly walkable, highly amenitized community, and frankly, I think will elevate the standard for multifamily living in Sugar Land. So during my time tonight, I want to just cover three important components of the project. First being kind of who is Morgan, and why does that matter? The second being what is our vision for the community? And the third is sort of who do we expect to live here? Who are we welcoming, and who do we plan on having inhabit our spaces? So a brief overview that everyone can see on the screen for the audience, Morgan is a third-generation family-owned company. We are headquartered here in Houston. Our founder is Bill Morgan, who was a Holocaust survivor. He started the company in 1959, a true Rex to riches, self-made man, who's still alive today and still calls me, and he's 97 or 98 and still wants to know how leasing's going, and, you know, a topical and, and frankly, a great human being, and I'm, I'm proud to be a part of his, of his company. Since the late 80s, Morgan has focused exclusively on Class A multifamily development, and I would say we, over the last, you know, 20 years, we've really grown into a nationally-recognized firm. We have a couple of accolades just kind of noted here, but we've developed projects in several states. While we're headquartered here, we have offices in, in Florida, down in Miami. We also have small regional offices in Austin, in Dallas, and in Denver. I do think it's important to recognize that Morgan is a vertically-integrated company, and sort of what does that mean, and what does that mean for Sugar Land? So we develop, we construct, we manage all in-house. That's not unique or rare for our business, but I think it's an important consideration to understand who you're working with, what our track record is, our ability to execute in difficult times, and then frankly, having one point of contact for all future development questions as we, as we go forward. Just as a, specific to Houston, it's not recognized on this slide, but we've completed 25 projects in Houston to date. We have two more under construction that are going to deliver soon, and that probably puts us in the top one or two multifamily development shops here in the City of Houston. Advance to this. So let's get into second point. What is our vision for the community? I know several people have already seen these renderings, I guess for folks that are joining the meeting, they probably haven't seen them yet. But we, we do plan to be the best, the best mixed-use community that's, that's delivered in Sugar Land, and likely will be for, for the foreseeable future. Everybody knows the location, it's a very unique location. It's one of the most unique locations frankly that I've ever seen in my time as developer working in commercial real estate. Very pleased and very excited to, to be working on it and presenting this opportunity today. What you note on this rendering, I guess the mouse isn't working, but the top floor, we actually do have a sky lounge, which is not really, wasn't really a talking point as we were going through some of the amenities of the building, but the top floor will have a sky lounge that'll have south-facing views and east-facing views, which you think will be a fantastic amenity for the residents. Another rendering complements sort of the southwest corner of the project. Another rendering complements sort of the southwest corner of the project. This is as you're coming over the bridge over Brooks Lake immediately to your right. We've got a double-level fitness center with lots of storefront glass showcasing, you know, the various, you know, square footages that we have on the ground floor of just amenity space. And then as noted earlier on the western side of this image, you can see the residential entrances that are more of like an urban streetscape. That's sort of an atypical component, but we worked through that. We think it's a fantastic addition to this process and to this program, and so we're very excited to show you that, too. One additional component, I know we touched on this, was just a rendering for sort of the east-facing side of the community. And this is where we're activating the eastern portion with, we hope to be a dynamic mix of live-work units and then co-working. Incubator-type tenants that will likely benefit from having residential units right on top and within a short walking distance. And you can see that more closely on this exhibit. It's basically everything from the garage heading to the south. Also, there's several amenity areas to the southeast of this rendering. And I guess the third point would be question of who do we expect to live here? Who are we targeting? So we're targeting empty nesters, we're targeting high-earning, educated, young professionals, young people, family in Sugar Land, gone to college, starting their careers, they want to come back, they want to be closer to Sugar Land, we want to provide them with the best project that's delivered in something that's in a very walkable urban environment, which we think most younger people really gravitate towards, and most of our projects have been oriented towards those types of projects. We are, I guess the mix of the project is 58% one bedrooms, 41% two bedrooms, and the average unit size is 937 square feet. From a rental perspective, our rents are underrended at about $2,100 a month, which is roughly $1,800 a month for the one bedrooms and about $2,500 a month for the two bedrooms. I'll speak to some of these, but essentially, these are projects that are representative of projects that we've delivered in the past. Frankly, this project will have nicer finishes. You're going to have quartz countertops, 42-inch upper cabinetry in the kitchens. We talked about having upgraded stainless steel appliances, spa-inspired bathrooms, upgraded flooring, upgraded lighting. It will be one of the nicest projects that Morgan has ever built. As it relates to the sort of last image here, this is mostly a focus on our amenity spaces. We have a double-story fitness center, which is representative of the first image here. We've, we've done that at several projects, and they all look great, lots of natural light, it's a very welcoming place to exercise in. But you also have the convenience of state-of-the-art fitness equipment and, and pools and yoga rooms and club spaces and meeting rooms, all with the best interior design with, with fantastic, you know, build-out throughout the community. That really ends sort of my talking portion of the presentation. Again, I really just wanted to thank you all for allowing me to speak here and appreciate the cooperation that we've had to date and look forward to answering any questions.
Yeah, we're going to go ahead and have a public hearing, and then after that, we'll open up the questions from the council members.
Okay. Thank you.
At this time, we're going to open the public hearing. For anybody that wants to speak on this particular item, I've got three people that have signed up. Just because you haven't signed up doesn't mean you won't be able to speak. Anybody that wants to speak is invited to come to the podium after I call our three guests. Our first guest is Jeff Wiley. Jeff?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Ms. May. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name's Jeff Wiley. I'm a resident of the city of Sugar Land, and I reside at 2415 Hodges Bend Circle. I'm also the president and CEO of the Greater Fort Bend EDC. I speak both personally as a resident and professionally tonight on behalf of my organization and the board in support of this project. I've been a resident of Sugar Land now for 19 years. Most of that time, I've worked in the floor building adjacent to this site. I have also lived in the Creek Bend neighborhood down the street for three years. I know the area pretty well. I'm familiar with the location and certainly the project's impact in this specific area. My wife and I moved here for work, but selected this community for its schools and the wonderful well-planned, master-planned communities that we have here. We also liked the opportunity to live in a community with a small-town feel but have all the amenities of the city life. Sugar Land Town Square gave us that sense of life, live, work, play, we were all looking for within miles of where we lived. Over the decades here, living here, we have also seen retail come and go and vacant retail spaces remain surprisingly. Likewise, retail projects in Lake Point across from where we work in the floor building and I work in the floor building continue to struggle with the former Baritas and Post Oak locations, as well as Coal Vines vacant for years now. While we are one of the wealthiest and culturally diverse communities in the country, that doesn't translate necessarily to robust retail success in our community. To make centers work, you've got to provide the retail opportunities all residents can take advantage of. We must increase population density around the centers while ensuring the overall quality of the life aspects that we have come to expect remain. Based on the application of the data presented by the developer in the city, there seems to be no significant impact on traffic projected on the area or on the school system for the K through 12 students projected. In previous discussions concerning multifamily in the city, we also know that there is data suggesting no increased incidence of crime per capita for apartments over other parts of the city. I think that's an important aspect. The Pearl at Lake Point is primarily in a commercial area buffered by Brooks Lake with pedestrian access to Lake Point. I believe the Pearl will be a welcome addition to the area and a benefit to sustain to new retail restaurants that benefit the entire community. One final point concerning quality. Unlike the apartments we see in our neighboring Harris County and those cities, they don't have zoning like we have here, and they don't have deed restrictions that we have here. So the quality control issues that people generally have and the fears that they generally seek in these apartment discussions aren't really relevant in our community. We have protections against those. I know I'm at three minutes. I would just say that the final point, our police are one of the best police forces in this country. I'm sure with your council's oversight, we'll protect this community in any event, no matter if this goes or doesn't. So I think that we would certainly support this in all aspects. Thank you.
Our second speaker is Jared Jamison. Jared?
Mr. Mayor, Council, appreciate the opportunity. Let me first say that I moved to Sugar Land, my parents moved here when I was seven, and I'm a huge consumer of Sugar Land water, and I love it, and it didn't stunt my growth, and I drink it every day. And although some people call it sink water, I don't refer to it as derogatorily. I like it. So anyway, appreciate the opportunity to speak on this project today. When I moved back to Sugar Land 25 years ago, my wife and I moved into Greatwood, and we subsequently built a house in Greatwood. And then as my daughter was leaving to go off to college or getting close, we decided we wanted to change. And I wanted to get rid of the backyard and the big upstairs that no one would go to, and the townhomes at Lake Point were an ideal opportunity for us. So I moved into the townhome. I live on the water. If I lay in my bed and look the right way out the window, I can see the site. Okay, so it's, it's very near and dear to me, and then I'm going to look at it every day.
Jared, what's your address?
What?
What's your address?
I'm sorry, 1358 Lake Point is my, is my address. So why did we move there? We moved there because of the things that were already mentioned. We have restaurants that are 200 feet away. We have the Whole Foods. We have the things that we wanted to do as essentially empty nesters. But as Jeff mentioned, there's issues, like those restaurants have been sitting empty for years. And I think one of the reasons is we need more, we need more people. Who are, who are the people that are going to go to the restaurants and to the retail establishments? Those are the people that live there. And these are also people who can afford to pay to go to the Whole Foods and to the restaurants. So I fully support the project. The other thing I wanted to say is I, I think that I'm also an employer, and I employ nine people in Sugar Land. Currently, I don't have any employees that potentially could, could utilize the apartments, but if someone's younger and they come to Sugar Land and we want them to stay here, they work here, this is an ideal opportunity. And I just think, looking around, there's not that many opportunities. They're not in a position likely to be able to buy a single-family house, and probably they don't want to. So having an apartment complex like this that would, that would permit them and give them the opportunity for a nice place to live with the amenities, I think is ideal. And then finally, like at, I think any developer, it's, it's critical that you have a quality developer. And I'm not sure if there's anyone more quality than Les Newton. And getting to know Morgan Group through this process, I would, I would say that they are as well. So I would fully encourage you to support the project in every way. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Our next guest is Colby Curtis. Colby?
Good evening, Mayor, Council members. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm Colby Curtis and a 35-year resident of Sugar Land. I live at 3914 Woodhollow Court. As many of you know, I'm a commercial real estate broker, and I've been involved in commercial real estate in Sugar Land for almost 40 years. I've had offices in Sugar Land for over 30 years, with the past 15 years in my role as a partner and managing director of the Fort Bend Office of Colliers. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of the proposed rezoning of a 6.5 acres in Lake Point from business office to Pearl Lake Point PD Final Development Plan. I'm not involved in the Pearl development being discussed tonight. I'm here to speak on my behalf as a Sugar Land resident, as a long-term member of the Sugar Land commercial real estate community, and as a supporter of Les and Don and their efforts to bring such a potentially valuable asset as the Pearl to the Lake Point Peninsula. It has been an honor and a privilege to have had a front-row view of the explosive growth and success story that Sugar Land. I'm proud to have played a small part in a number of developments here in the city. I feel that one of the greatest challenges, however, that this and future councils have is complacency. This council has a far more difficult challenge than councils of the past few decades. It is far easier to attract world-class class development and amenities when you're the fastest, fastest-growing community in the state. As our community has aged, however, and the focus has shifted more toward maintaining our existing infrastructure rather than building new, our opportunities to attract quality new developments has slowly diminished. We only have a few top-quality sites remaining. The city's adoption of the land use plan in 2018 was a huge step in creating these remaining opportunities. In my role as a board member on the First Colony Community Association, I'm currently involved in discussions with your planning and zoning department in regard to partnering together on a study which would help both the city and FCCA, FCCSA identify current and relevant residential and commercial architectural trends and standards, which would allow us to examine our existing covenants, restrictions, zoning language, et cetera, in order to allow us to remain relevant and competitive with new communities in Houston. The Pearl is a prime example of current and relevant development, and it could play a huge role in the future development of the Fluor Peninsula. Opportunities to acquire developments like the Pearl are rare. More and more every day, Sugar Land is having to compete with other growing communities around the city for best-in-class developments.
Ten seconds.
Couple more. We must be prepared to provide companies or employees with residential alternatives like the Pearl. I firmly believe that projects like the Pearl will be essential to Sugar Land's ability to continue to compete with other economic centers around the city. I'm aware of the concerns within the city in regard to multifamily development. Multi-development does not mean we are sacrificing quality. That can be legislated by this council. If Sugar Land wants to continue to lead our region as a community that's first, first choice for individuals, families, at offering products and environments that are first-in-class and that offer consumers what they're demanding, I'm confident that a development such as the Pearl will bring that value to the city, to Lake Point and other owners. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we don't have anybody else that's signed up. If I could remind people that you've got three minutes. Anyone else that would like to speak? This time, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing. We're going to move on to council questions. I'm going to go ahead and read first consideration, consideration of, and action on City of Sugar Land Ordinance Number 2305, and I'll open it up to the council members. Carol?
Thank you. The first is a curiosity. A part of the existing Creek Bend Drive is marked "public," but then the part of it that wraps around the proposed development is marked "Creek Bend Drive Private." So I was just sort of curious, I know that there's private deed restrictions, but I was just sort of curious what the significance is of it being marked "Creek Bend Drive Private." Just a curiosity.
It, it used to be all private when we bought the land in '04 from FLUR. We were able to take most of the existing Creek Bend, make improvements, and get it accepted by the city as a public street. This portion of Creek Bend doesn't meet all of the criteria. It has some very sharp curves, and we needed, because of the shape, we needed to have driveways that were closer together than what is allowed on a public street, so that's why it remained private.
Oh, interesting. Okay, thank you. And how did you determine the appropriate number of parking places for the Pearl?
We're following your code.
Well, I know that part. I was just sort of curious if there were any adjustments or any, yeah, to the percentages or anything like that.
Thank you. That's a great question. So obviously, as you noted, code requirements for, per units, per space. I think Sugar Land's code requirements are actually very stringent. Typically, you know, City of Houston, most of the municipalities have, have like a, roughly a 1.5, you know, per-unit parking requirement, which sometimes equates about one parking space per bedroom, depending on the scale and the scope and the mix. I think here, roughly 1.8, maybe pushing almost 1.9, which is a very significant amount of parking, both with, you know, inside our structure garage, which is secure, and then also with parking on the street. So it's a mathematical equation based on how many units, what the code is, and then what we felt is reasonable for the community size. And do we think people are going to have multiple vehicles, you know, in the community? Can we support that? And then also, there's some, you know, shared parking that's going to go into office, you know, component, how many people are going to come during the day, how many people are going to leave, you know, come home in the evening, and so there's a consideration based on the ULI model for shared parking, too.
Okay, thank you. And one last question. So you said the average apartment is going to be 937 square feet. I know there's, it's part one-bedroom, part two-bedroom. So what's the average square footage for the one-bedroom, and then what's the average square footage for the two-bedroom?
Do you have that by any chance? Can I grab that for you? Development Associate, Garrett. He's, he does all the hard work. So the average square footage for the one-bed is 755. The two-bed is 1173.
Okay, great.
And then the live-work is about a little over 1,700 square feet.
Okay, and you said it'd be about $1,800 for the one-bedroom and around $2,500 for the two-bedroom?
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else? Jennifer?
Hi, thank you for coming. Do you have any similar projects to this one that you've done that you could talk about your successes or challenges with a project of this nature?
Just in terms of the, the type of project or within an area that requires rezoning? Or type of project, I guess? Just the quality of the Pearl?
Yes, yes.
Sure. So in City Center, I'm sure everybody sort of knows City Center. We have two communities at City Center. So that was the same situation where two different land sites, how do we make the best use of this? How do we be a value-add to the community? So obviously, it's within a great school district. The school district wanted to make sure that what we were bringing was the highest quality. So there, we have two Pearl projects. Actually, from an architectural standpoint, there's a lot of similarities. Same architectural firm is designing them, lots of masonry, lots of heavy glass, two-story volume fitness center. There, we have two different types of projects, one being a larger project with less units, the other being smaller, traditional multifamily sizing. So that was roughly 900 square-foot average unit sizes, around 300 units, give or take. That, both of those projects do exceptionally well, and it's, it's two things. One being the location is phenomenal. People want to be in that school district, they want to be able to get to City Center, they want to be close to their kids' activities, and so that's always been great. But the, the build-out within the communities is exceptional as well. Our Pearl brand is really our highest level of quality, and so it really goes to show, I mean, the average age, I think, in the, the larger community is probably something closer to 50 years old on average. It's a much more, it's an older demographic, much more affluent. I think the average income in that building is maybe $400,000. And, and then on the, the more traditional side, it's a slightly younger demographic, it's probably age 30. age 30, give or take, and incomes are probably around half of what it is on the other side. And so it's a function of what we built, but the finishes are comparable, but the location's exceptional. And when you build a high-quality project and you manage it in-house and take care of it, you know, you can perform really well. Sure.
Suzanne?
Thank you. First of all, I'm excited about this. I think it's fantastic. It's going to be beautiful. It's much-needed in this rack, and I think it's going to populate those restaurants. We've been waiting to come back for a long time. So congratulations, staff and all of you. My question is about the live-work components, actually about the business part of it. So you have, how much square footage of business in this?
So the live-work units we have...
I'm sorry, just the business part. I know that you're going to transfer...
The live-work is about 9,600 square feet.
So I, am I correct that we're going to transfer some of this back into live-work if the business component isn't successful? Is that correct?
That was a goal, correct. We, so we've done projects in the past where we've had to put in office, or we've had to put in retail where it really didn't feel like it was a retail need, and those spaces sit vacant. And, you know, from my perspective, I want to make sure that the community looks and feels completely activated, and so I certainly hope that we find users for the office spaces and that it's a great amenity. People love coming to work. They can even, you know, live upstairs. The goal in, you know, recommending that was that, give us a couple of years. We're going to open up. We're going to lease up. By the time we're stabilized on the multifamily component, if we're not successful on the office side of this, because there's just not a demand for that type of office when we deliver, give us an opportunity to go back to what we think is going to be a little bit easier to have success, which would be live-work units. So the idea would be to take that 9,600 square feet and just slice it up and provide probably five live-work units to keep the total under 380. That was the goal.
Okay, I think that's a fabulous idea. It keeps it flexible and it keeps it moving and fluid, so congratulations on that. Sir, can I make a motion to approve?
Yes, I've got one more question. I've got a motion to approve by Watley. Let me go ahead and get a second, and then we'll go ahead and finish the question. Another second by Jacobson. William?
So I'm almost certain the question's going to come out. Based on traffic study, what I'm hearing is it's going to be a neutral effect, correct, to traffic? Highway 6 is already burdened, as we all know. I'm certainly excited about this opportunity, but I just wanted to say maybe 5,000 times, this is going to be a neutral effect on traffic based on the studies that we've done in the past. Also, I wanted to let you know I do appreciate the renderings that you offered. I'm curious if you have one regarding the parking garage, because, correct me if I'm wrong, what I read or heard, it will be as high as six stories where the apartment residential would be as high as five. Is that correct?
Correct. So the, it's a wrapped garage, and so when we talk about a six-level garage, the unit on level five is taller than the level six garage, so you don't see any garage at all. It's completely insulated inside the interior of the building.
Okay, so you do not have a rendering or a visionary rendering of the parking garage? Just curious.
In our site plan, you can see it from the bird's-eye view. It's right in the middle.
Okay.
But from the street, all of the elevations that you saw are what you will see. There is no, you do not see the garage from any elevation.
And the study regarding the school district, if I can remember what you had presented, 23 students is what they would anticipate?
Yeah, I think it, I think it was 12 elementary, six middle, and five high school, something like that.
Fabulous. Thank you.
Suzanne?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I've got a question for staff. If we can ask staff a question. This is about Lauren. The street in front where Milano Banquet Hall and E-Contractors, there's a building there. I've heard from a couple of those folks saying that the street in front of this project is very narrow, and it's, there's been times that people drive on the wrong side of the street to go up to Flor Daniel and make a left, even at night when it's a little darker. So do we have enough street lighting here, number one? And are we making any modifications to the street in front of this project?
They're doing, we're not whining it. There's going to be on-street parking there. There is lighting on both Creek Bend "private" and the Creek Bend leading to the intersection at Fluor. So that was evaluated as part of the traffic study, as far as if there was anything else needed. There's nothing being proposed. The private improvements relate to lane storage with the parking garage and making sure there's enough sight distance to turn in and out of the parking garage, and then some additions on the private sidewalk in front of Milano and having crosswalks. So it was focused on some safety elements with pedestrians, focusing a little more on that.
So follow-up would be, is the parking along Flor Daniel Boulevard that I'm looking at here or along Creek Bend?
Let's see if we can quickly get to the site plan. Right, so there's head-in parking on Creek Bend that leads up to Fluor.
Okay.
That's what you're seeing there, and then some on-street, thank you, on the private Creek Bend. Is that?
Okay, I see that now. So there's, along both, there's parking? Head-in and...
The head-in is on the existing Creek Bend, right. Yes. And that was, all the parking is evaluated as part of the traffic impact study. Yep.
I just, I just wonder what's going to happen when this has 371, they're at full occupancy, how that's going to affect the streets later on. We'll have to evaluate that later, I'm assuming. We'll just have to keep an eye on it, but...
Absolutely.
There is a valid concern there. That's it, Mayor.
A question, Les. I don't care which one of you guys addresses it. It, the intent is to have a market-based project. It's not to have any subsidized units. There's a lot of discussion around public facilities corporations now. Not sure if you're familiar with the term. I just want to make sure that what we're doing here is not that kind of...
Correct, and I am familiar with the term. This is a market-rate deal. It was actually one of the resident meetings, one of the residents actually brought it up and said, "Would you be interested in doing it?" And I thought he was asking me to do it. Turns out, he was trying to make sure I definitely was not doing it. So, yeah, it's a normal market-rate deal.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I've got a motion. I've got a second. Any further, any other questions? You vote at this time, please. And it passes seven to zero. Thank you, council members.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. At this time, I'm going to recuse myself, and I'm going to pass the gavel to Stuart Jacobson, who will take us through Item 5A.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 5A, consideration of and action on City of Sugar Land Resolution Number 23-11, a resolution of the City of Sugar Land, Texas, finding that CenterPoint Energy Houston Electric LLC's application for approval to amend its distribution cost-recovery factor pursuant to its 16 Texas Administrative Code 25-point 243 to increase distribution rates within the city should be denied. Finding that the city's reasonable rate case expenses shall be reimbursed by the company. Finding that the meeting at which this resolution is passed open to the public as required by law, requiring notice of this resolution to the company and legal counsel, and that is the longest runout sentence I have ever heard in my life. I turn it over to Meredith Reed, the city attorney.
Thank you. As most attorneys, I am paid by the word.
Microphone, please.
Like most attorneys, I'm paid by the word. So the item before you is Resolution 2311. I think that the caption probably told you exactly what you're going to do. However, I wanted to give you a little background. April 5th, CenterPoint filed a new application to amend its DCRF factor, and they're asking for a significant increase over their projected revenues from the last time they filed. Still can't hear me. Okay. So this resolution would be a finding by you that the increase is unreasonable and should be denied. If you pass this resolution tonight, they then have 30 days to appeal this denial to the PUC. Your denial will be combined with other cities' denials, as well as the cities that are environs, which are not within a designated area, and the CenterPoint would have to appeal all of those. If the PUC goes through and takes their appeal, they would then be required to reimburse the city through the GCCC, the Gulf Coast Coalition of Cities, for any costs that we incur for attorneys' fees or consultants. So that's it. All this does is say, no, we think it's unreasonable. We want you to appeal it, and it will postpone this about 90 days at least before they can increase any cost to our residents.
Questions? Nishan?
Meredith, I'm assuming other cities are doing the same thing?
We are one of about 41 cities in the Gulf Coast Correlation of Cities, Coalition of Cities, and we are all passing this res, we are all asking our city councils to pass this resolution.
Pass as written.
Pass to deny the increase. Yes, sir.
That's always tricky.
It's like a double negative. Yes, sir.
Yes.
Suzanne?
Meredith, should we not win this? Is it retroactive to where you have to pay costs from the beginning?
CenterPoint would have to pay the cost from the point of your denial. The residents are not required to reimburse CenterPoint until the PUC approves their DCR.
Okay.
Anyone else? Any other questions? We need a motion in a second. Motion by Carol.
Second.
Second by William. Please vote. It is a 6-0 vote. Would someone like to recall the mayor? I mean, someone like to bring the mayor back in the room?
Well, we'll leave the room and see what happens. Item number six, workshop 6A, review of and discussion on the public safety training facility. Project update, I think there's a number of people. Lane Wolf, our senior manager of Vertica Construction, Michelle Allen, our assistant police chief, and Mark Campese, our assistant fire chief, are going to join in the discussion. Lane?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. Just want to make sure the mouse is working. We'll jump right into it. So the purpose of the training facility is to transition the police and fire department from remote training facilities and bringing the training back into the city, also providing ongoing training for staff to satisfy training requirements and maintain certifications, and long-term goal, this facility has potential to become a regional training center. You're going to see this background used in quite a bit of the slides. This is our 2016 master plan. This is our go-by. As we move along on the project, you'll see some tweaks and modifications to it, but this is what we're aiming to stand by. A bit of quick background, 2016, we purchased a central unit prison. We proceeded in 2018 to demolish all the buildings on-site except for the storage building and the prison itself, and we conducted all the asbestos abatement. Also, in 2018, we initiated Phase 1 of the training facility. 2018 through 19, we initiated Phases 1A, B, and C. Here on the site plan, you can see where these three phases were and how they worked together. Phase 1A being the interim gun range. Phase 1B were the access roads to give us access to the rear of the property. And Phase 1C was the fire training prop that you see out there. In between Phase 1 and Phase 2, we continued to do modifications out there, adding canopies out there, adding some structural concrete slabs to do more training on, moving connexes out there. But just recently, we completed two additional items. One was a SWAT training fast rope, and we hired a structural engineer to help us with the design of that. We also included a fire department rappelling station, and so what we've done is created a short video to show you these two items.
Around the world, most special operations units use the fast rope to be able to get their personnel onto scenes quickly, and our SWAT team is no different. Before we had this prop, we had to go to the Houston Police Department and use their facilities to be able to get our training. Now that we have this prop here, when we set this up, it's safer for our personnel and allows us more expeditionally to train, so we're able to hit more topics in less time. But additionally, having these capabilities is a critical skill set for us to be able to integrate with other area tactical teams to deal with the worst of the worst.
Rope rescue is really a way for us to kind of aid us when we're rescuing a patient. It could be someone's up high, say a window washer that gets stuck, or someone on a construction site, or somebody down low, like in the riverbanks, and so rope allow us to get people down to that person or up to that person. They also allow us to build a mechanical advantage system to raise that person from where they are to where we need them to be to get them in a rescue. We have a lot of hazards that a rope rescue capabilities will give us a better opportunity to access and provide better patient care, and so it could be, again, talking about construction sites, it could be at Champion X or Slumber Jade where they have, you know, some equipment that people work on. For our own city workers, it might be the water towers or some of the water treatment facilities. And then for our citizens, along these hike and bike trails that we have along our river here, or we're putting that new zip line facility in where someone might get stuck up on the zip line, and we just need to go up there and get them out down. So it gives us a lot more capabilities. We're like helping ourselves and helping our citizens. We want to provide the same kind of patient care to them out on a scene that we would say in their living room, and by being able to give us this rope access, we can get down to them and access them faster, we can start that patient care, and then we can safely move them from where they are to where we need them to be, thanks to, you know, this rope rescue.
Great job on the video. So Phase 2 of the training facility, so the scope of this includes ammunition training building, shoot house, apparatus building, outdoor classrooms, restrooms, water lines, septic system, and electricity service. What you see there in the two yellow circles, according to the original master plan, we had two separate buildings, but going into this, knowing COVID with inflation and supply chain issues and just overall material cost, right before we decided to move forward with the design, we worked together with the police and fire department, and we combined these two buildings into one to save money. So what you see in the orange rectangle in the middle is the location of the combined structure. This is how it sits on the property, and this is the footprint of the building and the associated parking. And here you see what the renderings look like. The second item we did as kind of a value engineering before we started design was the selection of the building structure, and that's a pre-engineered metal building. It's the best fit for this kind of construction and will help us keep within our budget. This is the bird's-eye view. Here, you can see the associated parking and the covered canopy parking in the rear. Couple other perspectives. This is the front of the building and the apparatus space, rear of the building. And here we have the floor plan. What you see on the left-hand side, the blue dash line, this is the PD side of the building. This is the shoot house area where they will be performing their training. On the top and to the right, where you see the red dash line, that's the fire department romper room, apparatus bay, and workshop. The shared space is in the middle towards the bottom. We also have a second floor. It's not a complete second floor. It's a series of mezzanines up there that will work in conjunction with the shoot house and the romper room training, and plus, we have storage and mechanical spaces up there. The shared area, as part of the training, we had to have a classroom in there. We put one large classroom. We've got a divider wall that'll extend across the middle. We can seat 24 people per side. We have an office there shaded in green on the right-hand side. This is for the instructors and the trainers. We have the entry lobby, break room to the left, corridor to the right. We have our restroom facility there, and also because we know we have people that are going to be training out and their boots might be getting muddy, we're placing three exterior restrooms, single-hole restrooms out there for their use, so they don't track everything inside. And with that, I'm going to transition over to Assistant Chief Allen.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So the unfortunate events over the last few weeks where our department experienced two separate officer-involved shootings, I think speaks volumes on the situations where officers would use the training that's going to be administered in this new ammunition building in order to be prepared to act appropriately on active violence scenes. building in order to be prepared to act appropriately on active violence scenes. This training is formerly known as ALERT or Advanced Law Enforcement Rapid Response. Thankfully, not all of our calls culminate in an officer having to fire their weapons, so another major aspect of our training is to provide officers real-life scenarios where they have to make a decision on how to handle a situation such as a verbal disturbance, where good communication skills can lead to de-escalation and resolution without any force used. Having the environment set up to simulate a single-family residence would just reinforce the real-life feel of our training. The flexibility of the simunition building will allow for our new canine units to train where the dogs can search for an area where a suspect could hide. SWAT will have the ability to practice their team movements in a variety of mock locations where we can configure the rooms to look like an apartment complex, a bank, or a school environment. We would also have the capacity to use this building in our community engagement functions, such as when we host our building search activities with our Citizens Police Academy and our teen academy. Here's a rendering of our SIM building, and it shows a roll-up door where vehicles can be driven inside, so that scenarios can begin with officers exiting a vehicle as in true life. And you can see that reflected here in this section of the floor plan. This is a rendering of the workroom where we can do repairs on simunition equipment or other items, and you see that reflected here on the floor plan. And then this is a rendering of the secure simunition storage area where we will keep the simunition guns and ammunition in secured lockers, and the trainer will be able to issue them to the role players via a pass-through window that you can see here. And that area is here on the floor plan. So just out a glance in the floor plan, you can see that there is an area with bleachers where we can have a debriefing at the conclusion of a scenario, a large open area where we can configure... There's that mouse didn't want to work for me. There's a large open area where we can have the movable walls to simulate a variety of environments, such as retail spaces, banks, apartments, or single-family homes, and three separate staircases to practice how to safely ascend or descend while searching for suspects. And there we go, finally. This area here is a hallway which will support doors where we can practice forcefully breaching, so it gives us a good opportunity to have a variety of changes. And this slide illustrates the second floor where we will have catwalks where the instructors can overlook the training that you can see the areas below that would be open. There is a second floor tactical training area where we can practice using staircases and then progressing to rooms that we have configured using movable walls. We will have an audiovisual room, so scenarios can be made even more realistic through the use of audio, so we could pipe in sounds of sirens, sounds of people screaming, and have variations in lighting to allow training in low-light situations. And then all these activities can be recorded and played back later for the participants to learn from those experiences. So for those of you that have not seen a simunition gun before, here's a picture of it. It's the same size, operates exactly like a real Glock that we carry, but it's obviously painted blue so that we can distinguish it from our regular-duty weapon. Here's the ammunition for a SIM gun, which is essentially soap rather than a lead bullet. There we go. My mouse keeps going. Here's the movable walls that we can break down and configure as we desire, includes doors, includes windows, so we can have a variety of things to truly simulate real life. Having the ability to easily reconfigure a floor plan with those movable walls is a tremendous benefit to our training because there's a limited number of places that a suspect can hide in a small room, right? So after a few training sessions, everyone would know that's where the bad guy's going to be. So by allowing us to maneuver those for a variety of different training situations, officers are going to be walking into an undetermined configuration, and it forces the officer to take in and analyze the environment before making a decision, just like in real So I will turn that over to Chief Campese.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. How are y'all? We're really excited about this building and what it's going to bring to the fire department as far as for training aspect, especially when we come together with our friends from PD. Obviously, you know, the investment you guys have already made out there with the Conex structure and our ability to do live-fire training is something that we keep in the forefront, but having a building like this to give us the support that we need to support a burned building later down the road, we'll talk about some of the aspects of that that's going to help us into the future phases. One of the most important things that's beneficial to us is the increased indoor classroom space. As we have grown our fire department, we don't have a large training classroom that I can support, like a whole shift of firefighters. And then in addition to that, being able to offer classes, we have a number of things teed up for this summer, and one of the big things to get some of these larger programs into the city, I reach out to our mutual aid partners and offer seats in the classes, and if they want to come in, this will give us the opportunity to host more regional classes and bring in some of our neighbors to have some more classes here. So that classroom space you saw, we can take that middle wall, slide it out of the way, house fifty or sixty people in there, and that helps put Sugar Land more on the map. And indoor space for hands-on training during inclement weather, you know, it never fails. We plan something at the fire field, and we're going to go out and we're going to cut on cars, and we're going to do something, and it rains. And that's okay because we respond to car accidents in the rain, but we want to take a slower step and actually have some instruction with this. This will give us an opportunity to be inside, and so it won't matter what the weather does for us that day. We have this romper room that I'll talk about in a minute. Apparatus parking space, that's a large apparatus bay area out there, and it simulates, it's going to look just like a fire station except for one portion of it. That's good for us. We're growing. Our fleet is growing, more ambulances, more reserves, and so we're running out of space in the fire station, so this is twofold. The ability in the future for us to conduct our own basic fire academy, like hire folks in, train them all the way through, sell that service, offer a fire academy, have fire apparatus there stationed, simulated, just like in a fire station, is a real-life training environment. You know, somewhere down the road, we can be like up at Texas A&amp;M at Teaks, those fire academy cadets, they have a fire station, and so they load the truck and they dispatch and they drive over to the burned building and they fight fire. So much more realistic training, just like Chief Allen talked about, officers being able to drive in and deploy from their vehicles. We'll have the same type of situation. And again, more indoor space to take care of our vehicles. Workshop space, as I talked about, when we get ready to build that Class A burn building, it comes with some construction. Right now, I have a Conex box out there that has some welding equipment in it and everything we need to build burn props and a number of other things that support training. Inside this apparatus bay, we're going to have that space as well. And then the biggest thing that I think is important that we talk about is our relationship with fire and PD, working together in this collaborative space. We have some really good conversations going on whenever we talk about their simunition side, and, you know, we even already have a prop out at the fire field in the warehouse where SWAT has built out divided rooms, and we work together and we go out and we put firefighters blacked out and we let them search through there, you know? So there's a lot of good opportunity for them to be working in our romper room, in our apparatus base, and likewise, us on that side, so it's a great opportunity for us. What you're looking at here is the romper room. I didn't name it. Chief Boker came up with that. I feel like that might bring a sense of rambunctiousness to some of us, but maybe I just don't know the term. But what you're looking at, that's the indoor space up there to the top left. There's a large bay door on the back of it. You'll see pictures in a second. But we can work inside. We can do a number of things, man. If I wanted to bring a compressed natural gas garbage truck out and do an overview, I can bring that thing inside. It doesn't matter if it's raining, and we can have class kind of inside. If I want a tow truck to bring vehicles and drop them inside, I can do all those things. Catwalk areas, like we talked about earlier, so instructors or chief officers or whoever's watching can get up high and see what folks are doing, kind of gives us a bird's eye view where it's more beneficial to us. A workroom, obviously a toolroom for these kind of things. SCBA, we're building this building to hold the infrastructure that we need for when we have a larger burned building out there. I'm going to need to refill air packs, and I need to be able to wash gear, the whole nine yards. And so while the initial steps of this doesn't have all that equipment, we are planning for that, and we're putting all the infrastructure in place so that we can have the plumbing and electrical and everything we need. These apparatus bays you look at, again, large area, we already kind of jot down, we can already fill it up today with the units that we have for training and then some reserve apparatus. That shop area, all the way to the right, that would kind of be chain-linked off, almost like a cage when you kind of walk into a warehouse, and then we could secure all of our equipment, and that would help us build training props and fix training props, because every once in a while, we're a little hard on stuff, so kind of leaves us an opportunity there. Again, this is the open to below, that romper room, basically you're looking at the full two stories when you're in there, and you can get up on the catwalk and look down. A mezzanine up above, we'll jump onto the next picture. This is that romper room, and so if you study it closely, that top-right picture, you can see the catwalk across the front of the room. But if you kind of look off to the left, up over those bleachers, you're going to see some window openings, and then even that bottom right is a better picture of it, and you'll see a firefighter there climbing that window. That is more indoor practice for us. And so if we're running a fire academy, we're running ladders, whatever the case may be, I don't have to worry about it, lightning outside while we're throwing ladders. We're engineering in some anchor points, and so we can have safety lines put in place so we can practice things like window bailouts and, you know, just a number of things that us and police are starting to encounter more often. So very cool opportunity right here in this romper room. And then like I've talked to you before, the apparatus bay, you can kind of see there, that top-left picture's got chain-link fence kind of across the back, but we'll have a number of apparatus in there, and then the same thing applies. We can pull all that stuff out, and now we have a large floor area to do any kind of opportunities for training exercises, whether those guys or girls are doing gear drills right there. But if we wanted to build out some of our own mazes or expand more of what PD's doing on the other side, we have a lot of floor space, a lot of indoor space, and so it's going to benefit us tremendously. You got this, Ray? Thanks.
Okay, just a few interior views here. This is next to the entry lobby, restrooms to the left. Here's the break room area, simple break room, but we need some basic accommodations for the guys training. Another view of the break room. Long seating area at the back will have USB charging ports so they can charge their phones and laptops and things like that. The instructor office. Restrooms, vanity, lockers, shower area, view of the exterior restroom, and the fun stuff, budget and schedule. So this is part of the 2019 GEO bond. Funding was provided in FY22. We have an overall project budget of $10 million. Our soft cost, design miscellaneous cost is $1.5 million. Construction budget's $8.5 million. During the process, once we completed, there's three phases of documentation, SD, DD, and CD construction documents. At the end of DD, the architect went through an estimate and created that estimate based off of his knowledge, reaching out to various contractors and getting the most accurate pricing. Simultaneously, I went out to a third-party estimating firm and got my own estimate. Then we compared the numbers. We came in, of course, over budget, so we've been working together to figure out where some of those cost increases are. We've been able to get those numbers back down, but it's still kind of an uncertain market right now. The way I'm putting together this bid package is we're going to include three different alternates. The parking areas and the canopies that you saw there will be broken out as one package. The fixtures, furniture, and equipment will be broken out as another package, and then all the technology aspect. I've been meeting continuously with IT on this project. Right now, he said we had an initial budget for the technology, and he said that costs are even double, sometimes triple, and the lead times are anywhere from six months, eight months, to twelve months, depending on the equipment that we're buying. So I'm breaking that whole technology aspect out, and then once we get further along and towards the end of the project, I'll get back together with IT and formulate a cost budget that's appropriate for the project at that time. Phase two, we're wrapping up. We're probably at about sixty, seventy percent CD documents right now, so looking probably closer to July, beginning of August going out for bid, and expect construction to go through 2024. So currently, with anticipating a potential funding gap, the engineering department has been working with budget on this to make them aware of what our current position is. We've also been working with the Congressional Community Project Funding Opportunity through Congresswoman Lizzie Fletcher's office. We submitted, we were one of fifty projects submitted. We have been shortlisted to one of fifteen. It's a long process. It will probably go through all the way December before we hear anything, but there's a potential there also. We have $1.5 million that we're requesting through that project. Future plans, next GEO bond, we were looking at phase three, and for that phase, we would include the enclosed gun range, which you see in the rectangle, the yellow rectangle on the left, the Class A burn building for the fire department, which is the yellow rectangle on the right. And then looking even further out, we have phase four options in the future for the driving skills pad and a joint training educational facility, bottom right. And with that, we would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? William?
Mayor, I have a million questions. Those of you that don't know, I've been a, March was thirty-one years I've been a police officer. So when I look at this, the one thing I see is it's too small already. I don't know how you guys feel about that. I know that this bond, this GO bond, was from 2019. I'm curious, how many staff do we have in police? How many do we have in fire? What's our total number? Approximately, you're going to be plus or minus. I'm curious.
Hundred and seventy-four sworn.
One seventy-four, so two hundred-ish.
Yeah, we're a hundred and forty.
Okay. So we're talking about three hundred and fifty people, plus or minus, and we have training room for fifty. Twenty-five and twenty-five, did I say, did I hear that right? So this is starting out small. And by the way, it's beautiful, great renderings, great ideas, great way to try to save money. It's 2019, and I love where we are going. And I know this is early, and I'm sorry, Mayor, but I'm telling you guys, there is probably nothing that strikes a nerve more with me than public service in the form of police and fire, because we all, you know, I learned this from a very wise man, no matter what we want to do in life, if we can't be saved, it's really probably not what we want to do anymore. So we have got to think big, trailblazer big here. I don't know where it could come from. It's the next GO bond, whatever that may be. We got to get bigger than this. Again, love the ideas. We're restricted by our economy. We're restricted by our bond, but wow, we need to trailblaze this thing out big time.
Stuart?
Thank you, Mayor. Lane, have we solved the problem of trains parking across the road?
Not yet, sir.
Are we going to eventually be able to have some route around the airport or in the backway?
Yes, sir, through Owens Road. Joint project, working with the county.
Thank you.
You know, Lane, kind of following up, I'm not quite as passionate as William is. I want to make sure that we build the facility that we're going to need in the future, not just for today. Do we have the capability, given the way you've laid it out, to expand to meet future needs?
Well, with regards to the classroom, to address that, the long-range project was a joint training educational building, which is a two-story building with college-style auditorium, classrooms in there, breakout rooms, hand-to-hand combat training rooms. And then at that point, you have a big enough training facility where you can be bringing in other departments regionally, and then you would also have to have the administrative staff to operate all that. So that is in the future. That would help, certainly. The gun range itself that we're looking at, originally, we were planning on doing an exterior range to try to save cost. We've switched gears on that, and we're looking at an enclosed range, so it can be utilized every single day, depending on, regardless of what the weather is. So we're looking at twenty-five-yard indoor range, fifty-yard outdoor range, and we will
And we will probably try to fit in a 100-yard minimal range, six to eight lanes. So we do have some things that we're looking at, but right now, we're working within the 2019 GEO bond.
What's the shortfall in the budget from what we've engineered it to be now and what it was originally?
I will have more accurate numbers, of course, once it bids. Right now, the $1.5 million that I submitted for the Lizzie Fletcher project, that's what I'm anticipating would get us through this phase.
So we need another million and a half to get back to our original scope? Or the scope that we have now?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, the question I'm asking is, from what we cost engineered, what was the budget number for what we originally planned to have? What was?
The $8.5 million.
But would the shortfall be $8.5 million?
It was, the GEO bond was $10 million and then we designated $8.5 for the construction cost. And we're trying to work towards that $8.5 right now. But I'm anticipating that we're gonna go over and that's why I pulled out the three alternates.
No, I don't think you understand what I'm asking. So what I'm asking is, you've basically cost engineered this thing to fit within our budget.
Correct.
And what I'm asking is, forget the cost engineering. If we go with the original facility that we originally planned, what is the cost overrun for that facility? And you may not have the number right now. I'm just, and you could follow up.
Correct. It was two separate buildings. And from probably the scope of work increased during this design process compared to what we originally had. The apparatus bay, for example, originally, according to the master plan, had four bays. We increased that scope during this project to six bays. And then same with the shoot house. The shoot house was probably 1,000 square feet less and that actually increased during this design process, once we figured out what the true needs of the police and fire department were.
So, okay, so.
So it has grown.
Yeah, so it actually has grown based on the identified needs as we've moved through. So it's not like we're shortchanging ourselves. I mean, I don't know how to evaluate whether it's the right size or it's the wrong size. That's up to y'all. And, but what I do wanna make sure that we do is we don't get all caught up in the cost. Because if we need to do another phase and go back out, you know, and we've talked about doing a bond referendum, we haven't decided, you know, what we're gonna put into that. But in the near future, we're going to do another bond referendum. And if we need to address some of those shortfalls in cost, I'd rather be able to address that in a future bond referendum and not necessarily say, well, this is just what we're gonna end up with. I don't buy that this is what we're gonna end up with.
Agreed.
I mean, we need to end up with what we believe our needs are for what, best we can, project in the future. And if we need to do another bond referendum, we just do it. We just add it on to the one that we've got. We're never gonna have enough money, you know. But we need to make sure that we don't shortchange ourselves in five, you know, 10 years down the road. Be sitting there going, well, I wish we'd have done this. Because as you know, as an architect, it's real expensive to go back and re-engineer some of this stuff. Better to do it on the front end than on the back end.
Yes, sir.
Suzanne, go ahead.
I have a question. When we use the facility to have other areas come in and train with us, is that enough revenue to even consider as an offset? For some of the cost?
Just from my perspective, there are so many instances where Fort Bend IED, for example, where Fort Bend IED would allow us to utilize their facilities. So in kind, we would allow them to use ours. So I don't see it as a huge revenue generating scenario for us at this point in time.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, some revenue could be pulled in from that. It's just hard to tell right now. If we don't have the facilities, it's hard for me to sell the training and get it in. But you're absolutely right. It's to fit our needs today. Like we were gonna have an apparatus bay out of this thing. And we grew that apparatus bay to kinda fit. And hey, bonus, we got a couple of classrooms. I think the biggest point to your question and your comments is that future building in the phase, that joint administrative building that's phase three or four, that's the win, right? That's the classroom building. That's where we have space and that's where we have capacity. And you couple that with their shooting range and our Class A burned building. Now we're able to be more regular with good, solid training that people are gonna wanna come be customers of for us.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Little less passion.
A little more common sense.
So I'm a shooter and probably two to three times. Last week, I went down, four times I was shooting rifle and pistol with friends and family. It's just what I do. So the thought of you guys not having even an indoor 100, which I go to in Dallas, Fort Worth, all the time. When I'm up there, I'm shooting rifle at 100 yards indoor. These are the kinda things I want our officers and our firefighters to say, hey, we're building, not immediately, we're building a destination for public service. We want the best in whatever state, in Virginia, for example. That was a plug for our police chief. We want the best from anywhere to say, we have got to get through that program in Sugar Land. So we gotta start with a vision that's large, that's trailblazing. That's all I'm saying. And I'm not trying to ridicule the current plan. It's beautiful and all that. I just wanna make sure when you said phase two, three, four, whatever, I want, I hope we're all on board with, hey, let's do this thing grand for our police and fire, please. That's all. Thank you.
So the prefabrication of the building, so this was to save money, like how much more are we saving with that versus doing like tilt wall construction? Or, I mean, we're going with the prefabrication of metal, right?
Correct.
To save money?
Yes. I don't have those side-by-side comparisons, but in this market for this type of building, pre-engineered building is a lot cheaper than tilt wall just because of the equipment necessary to the cranes to lift up the panels and all.
Well, tilt wall's not necessarily better.
Correct.
I mean, it's just not.
Yeah, usually you see a break-even point at like 70,000 square feet when you get to these bigger warehouse districts. You'll see a lot of it.
Good. This time, thank you. Thank you, Lane.
Thank you.
Michelle, Mark. Item number seven, City Council City Manager reports. Let's go to 7A. Stuart, I'm gonna start with you.
Thank you, Mayor. Carol and I attended the 25th Annual Investment in Youth Luncheon a couple of weeks ago. That was really inspiring, since I remember going to the very first one 25 years ago. And the second thing that I did I thought was noteworthy was I attended the ARC Annual Awards Dinner, Monday before last. And the ARC Annual Awards Dinner is all about celebrating people in our community who have made a big difference in the lives of people with intellectual disabilities. So that was a great event. Thank you.
Jennifer?
The Imperial Sugar Land Lions hosted their district conference and had Lions from across the region. And I also went on a trip to Washington DC with the Fort Bend Chamber Leadership Group. We had a great time.
Perfect. Carol?
Councilmember Watley and I attended the Child Advocates of Fort Bend Gala and they raised a lot of money to help abused children in and around Fort Bend County. So that was really a great event. And I attended the Earth Day Celebration combined with Party on the Plaza at Smart Financial Center. And that was a lot of fun. And then Councilmember Watley and I went on a tour of the recycling facilities. And that was with Rob Allen Swale and that was very educational, appreciated the opportunity to do that.
Michelle?
I'm gonna yield my time to William so he can have a little extra time.
Suzanne?
Okay, so Carol, William, and Jennifer and I went to Attack Poverty on the 27th. They worked to end poverty in our community in Fort Bend. It was a great event and they did really well. We also went earlier that day, Carol, William, and the mayor, of course, went to the airport, Sugar Land Airport, where we broke in and cut the ribbon for the $6.1 million hanger, which was absolutely fabulous. Global Select has a beautiful hanger there and they'll be, I think they're already using it at this point, yes?
Yes.
It is absolutely fabulous. Congratulations, Sugar Land Airport.
Thanks, Suzanne. William, I'm gonna let you go last.
Well.
Rick and I and Phyllis Murray, Phyllis is on our Legislative Task Force. And we went to the Legislature today. Shout out to Senators Culcorst and Huffman. They were very accommodated to our schedule. We got a chance to visit on the lobbying bill, also on the super preemption bill. Good feedback from them. And then also Representative Todd Hunter, in whose committee, the lobbying bill is gonna be heard if it gets heard. So Phyllis, she made the trip up with Rick. She's on our Legislative Task Force. She did a phenomenal job. So thanks to Phyllis. She's also the president of the FCCSA POA. So she was definitely a help for us. William, it's up to you now. Take it home.
Mayor, I don't know what I really wanna talk about because so many things are happening. But what I do wanna tell folks that don't know Sugar Land the way we do, tomorrow is the ribbon cutting for Go Ape. Those of you that don't know what that is. So tomorrow, the ribbon cutting is another one of the great things about our city that is unique. I believe only, correct me if I'm wrong, only Arlington, Texas, has a Go Ape zip line. And we have nearly 20 acres of zip line that, yes, the firefighters probably will have to pull me down from a line from time to time. But I wanna invite anyone that's interested to come out tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m., which is Wednesday morning, at 10:00 a.m. I don't know if the mayor is going to be there, are you?
No.
Well, we did have a challenge, so we'll just have to.
We'll postpone that for later.
Okay, we'll postpone it, do it later. But I just wanna tell everyone, Sugar Land is sweet again because we have another amazing destination in our city and I'm so thankful they're here.
And it's in District Four.
Yeah.
Item number B, City Manager Report. Deputy City Manager Jennifer May. Jennifer?
Right. In addition to the hanger opening last week, we had a big week celebrating our administrative professionals for Administrative Professionals Day. Tomorrow, we've got our regular quarterly update with the HOAs with a lot of good information there. A lot of people across the city, very busy this week in preparation for hurricane season, doing some extensive hurricane drill and preparedness exercises. And then just wanna share some fun news that our private sector partner at the Smart Financial Center, Ambassador Theater Group, has been nominated for a number of Tony Awards in their production arm of their company.
All right.
So congratulations to them. And that's it.
We've got a motion to adjourn at 7:13. Good job.